Give you a thumbs up. Live.
Good evening, and I'd like to call to order the January 23rd, 2025 work session of the Pecoson Planning Commission. We have several items on our work session agenda tonight, and rounding that off, I understand, Thomas, you have a presentation for us.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start, what we're going to cover in the work session, I try to anyways, is the three public hearing items you'll see in regular session. There is some redundancy, I'll say, in the materials you have in your work session packet, regular session packet, but right now, we'll work just from the work session packet. What I'm going to do is go through the presentation, obviously, the same presentation you'll see in regular session, but you know, this time, this gives us a little more time to discuss and call to discuss prior to the public hearing. So I'll make the presentation. We do have a few new members, so feel free to stop me as I present if you need to. You won't hurt my feelings a bit. Just one thing, though, make sure if you are speaking, speak into the mic so we can hear you loud and clear, so the public can hear you loud and clear, the folks at home, and this way, we can get a good recording for when Kathy takes the minutes, she can hear what you said. So, other than that, I am ready to present now, Chair. So tonight, this is a new public hearing for the indoor gun range, the multi-use facility that some of you have seen before, because the applicant, since the first app, first, since the first application, has purchased the property, and then, and there's been a few changes, conditions changed, some details of the application has changed, so this is kind of starting fresh as a new application. So this is technically the first public hearing for the new application, but a lot of it is the same. I'll breeze through what you've seen before, and I'll stop at the new high points. This is the application. There's no change in the use requested from the previous application. This was advertised for in the Daily Press, and adjacent property owners were notified. Same business description as the use before. It's a multi-use facility, and you'll see why as I go through the PowerPoint, but it's a wide range of uses in the facility, primarily an indoor gun range, but there is some retail, some commercial uses, and some business professional, some office uses, and I'll get there as I go on. This is the subject parcel, just outside of our building. This commonly referred to as the straight shot brewing parcel. Gentleman had a conditional use permit approved about a decade ago for a brewery there, but has since sold it to Mr. Raffles, and he submitted the request for the multi-use facility, which includes the indoor gun range. This is a very conceptual site layout provided to us by the applicant. You see, what I'm going to refer to, the middle of the building is kind of the cornerstone part of the building, and the wing to the north, that's what you're looking at tonight. That's Phase One of this project, the cornerstone and the north wing. The cornerstone houses some office space and some retail floor, and professional offices associated with one of the other requested uses, and the wing is two shooting ranges. I've put an X at the wing, I'll say, that runs to the south, because that is not a part of this request, but is a Phase Two of this overall development. This is another concept design submitted by the applicant, just gives you a different look conceptually of the building. This slide's very important, and I'll go to an even more important slide next, but this was also submitted by the applicant, gives you a general idea of the layout of the building as proposed for Phase One. This should look familiar to you, somewhat familiar if you considered this the first time. This was the floor plan submitted by the applicant the day of the first public hearing. It was distributed that day, but we really didn't have a lot of time to review it. Obviously, you saw it with your materials last week when they were sent, but you can see what is to be included in this slide. This is Phase One Floor Plan Level One. So the wing, the north wing, it's a flat range. It, I'll say, it's an open range, a training range. It's not sectioned off. It's not partitioned like a typical abayed range. It's a, it's an open, flat range. Then you see there's some VIP area and a quiet range, quiet range, you know, air rifles or maybe compound bows, you know, it's exactly what it means. It's a quiet range, things you can shoot that don't make a whole lot of noise. You see a check-in area, a lobby area, classroom, restrooms, and a vault. This is Phase One Floor Plan Level Two. So this is the second story of Phase One construction. You see that same wing, the second story now is 25-yard shooting bays. It's a range, it's sectioned off into bays 25 yards. Important to notice, there is storage area around the entirety of both bays. It's important, one, for the purpose it serves in storage. It's important, two, because it provides an extra buffer for the noise created by the range. Some specific of the design and the sound, if I'm not able to elaborate on or answer questions, I'm going to defer to the applicant. He's done some studies himself, he's consulted professionals. We have a theoretical sound test, I will say, in abatement measures, so I'll let him answer those in the public hearing during regular session. You see in the cornerstone of the building there, that's a large retail floor, you would assume is obviously associated with the indoor gun range, loading zone and storage area, a prep room, and retail storage. You see a small counter there, a gunsmith area, which is also included as a conditional use, and the classroom area. This is Level Three of the Phase One Floor Plan, and you can see exactly what's in it. Executive office, assuming for the owner, conference room space, more office space, restrooms, and closet space. Another conceptual from the applicant and owner. What you see highlighted in the top right of the depiction is a private easement to this property, Willanna Road. This concept design was overlaid in a plat the applicant has. I highlighted it there because it's going to be important to our discussion tonight as far as access to the parcel is concerned.
Slides?
Yes.
If I'm reading that right, the big area is open to the bays below, and it's just the new, this...
That, that's how I read it, that this, you know, the middle space is open and overlooks the downstairs. I think the staircase is indicative of that, and I think that will look down into the retail area below. Here, there's a few colorful, I'll call them rectangles, that I've inserted to try and explain some of the details of this property as far as easements and access is concerned. The two rectangles in yellow are the two you saw the last time you considered this. Have it's been prepared tonight, and then, we ask that the applicant, in discussion with him, offer to the city a 20-foot easement on either the north or south of the parcel, so that we can access to the east of the parcel, hopefully to Alpha Street. That has been a longtime plan and goal of the city, but with some consideration for the layout, how it's proposed, it was proposed originally, it may not be possible, I'll say, for a full connection, which I will get to in just a second. The red, what's shown in red is an existing 50-foot private easement. You read that in the condition, same as last time. That exists to serve the parcels to its south. We've asked that, since it's there, he can't build or develop in it anyways, convey it as right-of-way to the city as well as the parcels to the south. The green rectangle there attempts to depict that private access, Willanna Road. Very important to note, it is a private access, the details of which are fairly unknown to us as staff, you know, that's not a role we play in private access research, but it is there and exists. I would defer questions specifically about that easement to the applicant and now the owner of this property. You read in my memo, and, and we reference it in the comprehensive plan, you'll see at the end of the slide, future connection to Alpha Street. It is a high priority and has been a high priority to the city, this parcel being a key component of that, and depending on exactly how this parcel's developed, it may not afford access to Alpha Street and a through connection from City Hall Avenue directly to Alphas. An original concept, I would say, was that it would gain access possibly from the roundabout just at our front, but it would consume so much of the property to provide a full two-lane access, and you know, bend it to the north to Alphas, it makes the project unfeasible. It can't be laid out in a way that would allow for connection, full connection. So what this is showing would be a conceptual, roughly a 40-foot access, a right-of-way on the north of the subject parcel, that would allow for future connection straight to Alpha Street. We had a meeting with the applicant, it was a few weeks ago, myself, Wally, the city engineer and city manager, and discussed this connection, and how important it is to the city. It would afford the owner of this property, road frontage, and that basically, if he was willing to convey it to the city, then the manager would then take the city council a project, a scope of work to be completed to make that road happen, and if council didn't want to initiate the project and later appropriate the funds, he wouldn't have been required to convey property to us. That's how the condition, a condition was, was written, subject of that meeting. Since, the applicant has consulted with his attorney, had some conversation with his folks, and asked that that condition be removed. So it has been removed, and the condition currently, as presented to you tonight, reflects the condition prior. That would only grant the city the 20-foot on either the north or south, and then right-of-way over the existing 50 feet. It is, I'm comfortable in saying that if that's not conditioned, you know, there is no guarantee that we ever have full connection to Alpha Street. Now with the construction of the Public Safety Building on that parcel, and how this building would need to be constructed, and like I talked about, how the access would have to bend from the roundabout to Alpha Street, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't be possible. So that condition was discussed, but has since been removed. This was actually created by the applicant after our meeting initially, when he did offer to convey 40 feet. If that was to happen, we wouldn't need the 20 feet on the north and south. We wouldn't need the right-of-way of the 50-foot private. We would just need the 40 feet on the north, plenty of room to construct a two-lane, two-lane road, sidewalk, associated stormwater features, but again, has since been removed per the request of the applicant. You all saw this before. This is an example of an eight-lane shooting bay. This is what you can envision, that 25-yard range looking like. This is a, you know, the main lobby area, so this may be what it appears, you know, from that third level that more or less overlooks the retail space. Staging area for shooting lanes. The request is also for professional space and retail space for another business that the applicant and property owner owns, Hampton Roads Paramotors, that's a paramotor. That, the image on the right is actually the applicant flying over Back River, so pretty cool. This is the VC District Code, straight from the city code. Nothing has changed since you've last seen it, but these, these spell out the intent of the article of the VC District. The VC District is basically City Hall Avenue and the surrounding parcels, and the parcels that are where the fountains of Pecoson Development was intended through completion, I would say. The first intent, encourage commercial and office uses that do not attract large volumes of traffic and continuous customer turnover. None of the proposed uses in this first phase are necessarily high-traffic generators. You know, a high-traffic generator would be fast food, or, you know, a gas station. None of those are included in this, but overall impact is hard for us to calculate if it's ever built out to completion. You know, if Phase Two is ever built out, which would include more commercial and retail uses, it would be hard for us to really give a professional opinion now of the actual traffic generation, but we're comfortable in saying that it's not necessarily a high-traffic generator. The second intent is to limit and discourage development of strip-type commercial uses. This is, is not that. The third intent, minimize the visual and functional conflicts between residential and non-residential uses within and abutting the district. There's a condition there that requires the applicant, if granted approval by city council, to design this building consistent with what you find on City Hall Avenue currently. He's agreed to that, and at the time, we will share material descriptions with him that we've used at the Public Safety Building, what will be used on City Hall. We'll share all that with him, and then he'll be subject to ARB approval. The fourth, encouraging the consolidation of curb-cut driveways, parking areas, for efficient and economical parking. That's something we'll ensure once we get to development plan review. Promote development that minimizes land disturbance and incorporates compact, efficient design. There's no doubt that this built-out will have a large footprint. What that is, in terms of square feet or acreage, I don't know that yet. We haven't been provided a site plan, per se, but to say it's large, I don't think is, is an overstatement. The sixth intent is to create a pedestrian-friendly environment through the incorporation of sidewalks, bikeways, street trees, street furniture. Something else we'll ensure during development plan review. These are all the permitted uses in the Village Commercial District. I'm not going to read each one of them to you. Obviously, he will be permitted, per the code, to operate any of these uses within the building. Just by reading them, you could probably eliminate half or more that probably wouldn't locate in a facility of that nature, so he is permitted, though, for these uses in the This speaks to conditional uses in the VC District. All traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developers deemed necessary by the manager or his or her designee. That's conditioned. That's a condition of approval. It's also in the city code. That's, we will call it a clarifying condition. It's already in the code, but we make sure it's well-known to applicants in the CUP as well. The proposed use will not conflict in architectural scale or style to existing development in the district. We've conditioned that with the ARB condition and their review. Minimum visual and functional conflict created between the proposed use and nearby. We don't anticipate it. If there's a visual or functional conflict, we'll handle it during development plan review. DRC, that's our acronym for our staff, our Administrative Development Review Committee. That is pretty much our community development department, public works, utilities, the fire chief, and the assessor. Anticipated noise and congestion created by the use will be comparable to the levels created by the permitted uses in the district. That's conditioned. Noise has been a big topic, as it should be, of this application, seeing it is, it is an indoor gun range. The applicant has gone out and done some studies himself, and has had the work done on theoretical noise creation, I'll say, by the use. You all will have that presented to you in just a while. One thing that's important to realize about the VC District, as the code reads, is that it's not necessarily been developed, you know, how the code, I'll say, originally intended, right? What we have on City Hall Avenue is really professional office spaces. The offices at 200 City Hall Avenue in the front, the Public Safety Building, and this building, and then, of course, we have residential nearby in legacy, and you could say that the apartments above the building at the fountains is also a nearby residential use. The noise is important because we don't have incredible noise generators existing, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, kind of the tranquility of, of this space and the district is, is preserved regardless of what the use is. These are prohibited uses in the Village Commercial District. He's requested none of them, so that, that's really a non-issue. Here's what the comp plan says, really specifically about additional road accesses and emergency routes in the infrastructure section. The extension of Alpha Street to City Hall Avenue should also be considered to improve connectivity and promote economic development within the VC zoning district. No formal studies of the sites have been proposed, but any future infrastructure improvement master plan should consider them as potential sites for new access roads or emergency detours. This hasn't largely been a conversation because the property was held under the same ownership for, for about the last decade, and it was actually a, a condition of his approval to dedicate a necessary portion of that for a future full access. That was discussed with the applicant, was offered, but rescinded by the applicant for the reasons I mentioned earlier. More comprehensive plan language, this is just the intent of the VC District and some of the major components of the district. There is no minimum lot size, certain circumstances, zero lot line development is approvable. On-street parking, this really isn't a consideration for the, for this situation specifically. Shared stormwater is not, we see the language there again about streetscaping with benches and lights, landscaping, et cetera, and all the others will be achieved through development plan review. The last bullet, though, is important. Roadway access from collector and sub-collector thoroughfares. You know, collector and sub-collector thoroughfares are arterial streets to our main streets, you know, that provide connectivity on public street throughout the city. So that, again, goes back to the conversation about the access through this property to Alpha Street. These are our recommended conditions. I'll walk you through briefly some of the same study info that was provided in, in your packet, but the applicant is going to present on that himself during the public hearing, so I'm going to keep my comments on that short and allow him to expand on that since he did the work, he contracted the work, and in this case, defer to him and the experts he hired. A lot of these are carryover conditions from the first time you've seen it, but I'll go through each of them. The plan for the site shall only be approved once all requirements of city code are satisfied. This is the noise condition we were able to craft in consultation with the applicant, and it's subject of the studies he conducted and the work the folks have done for him, and this being a purpose-built range. It's purpose-built, and that noise will be mitigated, and it can handle all uses of the range that the applicant envisions being there. Gunshot noise shall not exceed 55 decibels measured by city staff using a city-owned sound level reader at the western, southern, and eastern property line when the building is closed, no doors or windows are open, and from the northern property line as it existed at the time of the application and prior to any conveyance of right-of-way. The applicant rescinded the condition to convey the 40 feet. He also expressed that if his attorney, after his attorney's review, he may offer it, again, prior to city council's consideration, but that is why we leave the language there about prior to any conveyance of right-of-way. So it's important because it's easy to understand where the property lines are and exist on the western, the southern, and the eastern property lines. That's where we'll take sound level measurements from. 55 decibels approximately is, is what would be generated if two of us or three of us were having a conversation, and I was holding the sound level reader between the three of us. A conversation, a typical conversation generates about 60 decibels. So you can imagine that's the requirement at the property line, and then, of course, as noise travels, it reduces, it dissipates. So the further the noise gets, the less, less likely you are to be able to hear it. The decibels as it, and the conditions as it's written, we feel comfortable that you won't hear the shots from the range in the parking lot at City Hall, or if you're walking into the library, or if you're walking on the trail. That was, you know, of course, the concern and the intent. But if the 40 feet is conveyed at the north, we're not going to reduce where we measure it from to the new property line if he conveys us a 40-foot right-of-way. There's going to be a two-lane public street there. Noise generated from the cars on the public street will be louder than, than the noise created by the gun range. That's why the condition is written the way it is. The third condition, this is the one about access and right-of-ways. It's the same posture, you saw it the first time. He would have to dedicate the 50-foot right-of-way to us over the 50-foot private easement that already exists, and then dedicate 20 feet, a 20-foot easement on either the north or south of the property to provide some possible pedestrian or maybe emergency access to the Alpha Street side of the property. Four, all traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developer as deemed necessary by the manager. The CUPLOs for all uses specifically permitted in Section 11-2 of the code, permitted uses of the VC District. The uses per the application and permitted as part of the CUP are as follows. So these are the uses that are specifically, are not specifically permitted in the district that we are permitting, if recommended for approval and approved by council. Retail sales is permitted in the B2 District. Every retail sale you see on West Creek Road, that's what that is. Gunsmithing and firearm manufacturing, professional office space for Hampton Roads Paramotors, and classroom or conference space to be used for firearm education, firearm safety, as well as aviation safety courses associated with Hampton Roads Paramotors. Signage is to be permitted in accordance with the code. All requirements is found in Chapter 22 Businesses, Article 3. Gunnery ranges, shooting areas of the code must be satisfied. This is an existing part of our code. It's been part of the code, I believe, since 1982. This is a regulatory part of the code that provides the police chief regulatory control over certain aspects of any gun range in the city. He would have to meet those requirements anyways, but it's a clarifying condition so that we all know what, what we're talking about. Coinciding with submission of a development plan, the applicant must submit architectural elevations of the proposed building as well as signage, material descriptions, paint colors, et cetera, to be considered by colors, et cetera, to be considered by the city's ARB. The facility shall be designed and constructed in a manner that is consistent with existing buildings on City Hall Avenue, to includes the ones I've mentioned earlier. The use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. If at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, or the conditions listed here, and the council may revoke the permit. This next condition, we worked with the applicant on these dates. If a site development plan for Phase 1, you're only really considering the Phase 1 part of this tonight because that's what will be developed first, and that's what we're giving the deadlines on. So if a site development plan for Phase 1 is not officially submitted to the city for review prior to July 1 of '26, this permit shall become null and void. That means exactly how it reads. An official site plan, a site development plan submission. That doesn't mean he has to get approval by then. That just means he has to have his site plan, his development plan submitted to us for review by July 1 of next year. The condition continues to say, if a certificate of occupancy for Phase 1 of the facility is not issued prior to December 31 of 2028, the permit shall become null and void. This is important, and CUP is moving forward so that when they are considered and approved by city council, it puts a little responsibility on the owner, the developer, to get the work done that they've asked permission to do. And if not, come back, you can ask for an extension for a new use. But this is, you know, to prevent decades-long CUPs and no movement on the parcels they're requested on. If at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. 13 city councils have the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. Again, I'll walk through this in regular session. I'm happy to answer any questions you have now. If you'd like to reserve them for regular session, that's fine, too. But anything you have and want to discuss now, I'm happy to answer questions. Or if you want to talk amongst yourselves, it's certainly appropriate at this time.
Curious about the, sorry, about the road?
Mm-hmm.
That's, where does that lead, does that lead out to With Creek Road?
Well, conceptually, conceivably, it would, the road would basically extend how I've depicted there in red, just above the roundabout on City Hall Avenue, and more or less straight through to Alpha Street.
Would lead to Alpha.
You know, so yes, you know, City Hall to Alpha's and Alpha's right to With Creek Road.
Well, but I was really referring to the private lane.
Yeah.
That's where that?
Yes, that Willanna Road, you can see it there to the right of the blue.
Yeah.
That leads, that connects to Alpha Street.
Okay.
Yes.
Great presentation. Beautiful. But I do have one question. In regards to parking?
Sure.
What's going on with?
So.
I've never heard that talked about.
That is something, it's a great question. That's something else we will consider during development plan, site plan review. You know, we have guidance, parking regulations, and minimums required in our site plan ordinance for uses. We don't have specific. Wiley and I do our research, and we don't steal things from other localities in planning and zoning. We borrow them. So if another locality has guidance, we'll use it. But there's parking guidance you can find from multiple sources, and we will, through that process, with his folks, with his engineers and development team, determine the appropriate number of parking spaces for the facility at large.
Thomas, I just want to make sure, the design that's on the screen currently, that 100-yard bay is considered part of Phase 1 floor plan?
It is. And that's a good topic to highlight. You heard the applicant mention this in his last presentation, and, you know, it has been difficult for us, well, especially me, layman in terms of gun range development, I'm not an engineer, to understand how that would work. How it's been explained, and of course, the applicant will be able to explain it himself, is that it's not a full-standing range, per se. You know, you would imagine that if you're standing in a shooting bay, you're doing just that, and it's that tall, the whole length of the bay, right? That's a typical range. That's not how the rifle range is constructed. There is a standing shooting area at, I'll say, the top of the range, but what you're actually shooting into is a structure, more or less a concrete pipe, that has just enough room for the bullet to travel and for a target at the end. So it's not eight or 10 feet tall, the whole length of the range. And the range will be somewhat partially subgrade. You can imagine it would be under a parking lot. That is something I will certainly defer to the applicant on, but that's the concept.
Along those lines, Thomas, it looks like there might be four lanes, shooting, if you will, that's depicted there?
That's how it's depicted. Whether that's final or not would be a question for the applicant. I think at one time he mentioned it may only be three, but certainly a question he can answer.
So then, the pipe, would it be four pipes?
I assume it would be four separate per the bays, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, and this, the 25-yard bays, you know, all the backstop requirements and noise mitigation panels, all that's included in that theoretical design that I provided you again, that I let him present on.
Thomas, I assume that the Village Commercial has no limitations on business hours for businesses within it, and I think his original plan was for this to have 24/7 access. That's still the?
There's no condition that requires any other hours of operation. We did have a conversation about it. He had mentioned 24/7 in the original. I'm not sure if that's his intention now, but certainly a conversation, you know, you all can have if you see fit for restrictive hours of operation.
You can speak to the Village Commercial District in general?
There's no limitation on specific hours of operations for any use in the district.
Since we're having a good conversation now, I wanted to hand this out to you all. There's extra copies here, some down there and some down here as well. Since Thomas referenced the comprehensive plan, I did make copies of that for everyone and highlight in there the part where we're talking about this roadway, this easement for Wilamina Road, or Willie, Willanna Road, excuse me. And, you know, my concern is, and Mr. Hershey, we're on one of the citizen advisory boards for the comprehensive plan, is several people who served on that plan. And it is our guiding foundational document on planning commission. It is something that, while certainly we can amend certain things through conditional use permits, it is one of those things that we look at as a planning tool, and this one goes until 2038. We review it each year. I believe we reviewed it last year and went over that. And so my concern with this parcel is if we remove the requirement to give this easement to the city for use for roadway access, as the comprehensive plan states, as the previous person who owned the property agreed upon. Again, if the applicant and if council says, you know what, we don't have the funding to do this, or we're not interested in doing this, then certainly there's nothing that prevents him from giving that over to the city. So that is his buffer, per se. But it will give a landlot parcel, with the exception of the traffic circle, and we've seen the diameter and the buildings from turning like this. It gives emergency access. It gives another way out of Alpha Street. And to me, especially since staff had worked with Mr. Raffles on this, it's something important as a commission that we need to consider as part of this application. Again, if he chooses, or city council says, no, we're not going to do that, then he doesn't have to give that easement to anyone. But city council, if they choose to put a roadway, a two-lane, not two-lane, but, you know, going and coming there, as well as benches and bypass and things that meet Village Commercial, that district, especially with the legacy right here, it would be great access for them to, you know, go past that and be able to go out to With Creek Road. It makes it more walkable. I think with this property being such a large footprint, I would be comfortable if the applicant were to agree upon this and replace Condition 3, which I gave you a copy of, that staff had worked with him, I would feel more comfortable with that because we have to look at the city, not just the applicant, and going forward, how this would benefit the city as a whole. And so that is my concern, and that is my recommendation of how I see a path forward for this application. I'd love to hear what you have to say or what your thoughts are on that tonight.
So we're at 20 feet he's given us, right?
Yes.
So we're talking about an extra 20 feet here.
Right. And Thomas can speak to the?
But he's, I believe he's also said that 20 feet is just, he can't do what he wants to do here.
For a full connection, 40 feet is really the minimum because a two-lane road is 24 feet, 12 feet a lane, then that only really provides 16, roughly eight aside, depending on, it's not going to be exactly eight aside, it may not, but it would really only leave you 18, eight aside, 16 to play with, four sidewalks, streetscaping, stormwater, so 40 feet, and that we discussed with our engineer, is really the minimum we would need for a full two-lane connection. Bird is 50, but we can, we can work, 40 can work. That's why we trust 40.
With rescue apparatus, I mean, the ladder truck in itself going down Little Florida Road is huge. But if you, this is a three-story building. If a ladder truck has to come in there and you have access to it easily, it can allow that ladder truck to get in there without any type of concern about whether it can make it down the road. Makes it more feasible.
I also agree, or would also like to support, that thinking that Alpha Street should connect to City Hall, and it comes under the umbrella of emergency routes, you know, and just from a safety standpoint, I think it very much helps the city, if you will. I think it helps the citizens navigate and move around. We've got such an increase in population right around this particular parcel with the village, I mean, the legacy here. I think it makes sense, and now, I think, is the right time, is the perfect opportunity, if you will. I think timing's everything, and I think now that's the way it should go. That's my personal thoughts on that.
Does that change the easement around the rest of the property, or still?
If, if the applicant had offered the 40, or if you all condition that the 40 be conveyed, obviously subject to council approval of more or less construction of a road, then we wouldn't need access. You know, there would be no 20 foot on the south, there would be no 20 foot on the north. Really wouldn't necessarily need the 50 feet on the east. We would have a full connection through the north side of the property to Alpha Street that this would actually have, that it would be fronted on the new road.
Well, I mean, it makes sense with the proximity of where it's at and it being kind of isolated down the end of that circle, that having ulterior access to it certainly makes sense.
Do you think he has the room if things are moved around?
It?
Do you think it's?
Per our previous discussion, it was feasible. There would be room even if he conveyed the 40 on the north for development built out to relation. He conveyed, there would be room for it in discussion with him, even if the 40-foot was conveyed to the city.
Would it be possible if he were willing to convey 40 feet on the south end, and there's the easement on the east side, to connect that way?
The issue is how much of the parcel you would have to take to bend the street south and then reconnect it north, then there wouldn't be room for his building at all. But if it was a 40 feet, basically a straight strip, a straight shot across the top, he would still have room for the building he intends to construct. So, and it's, you know, obviously, a straight shot from City Hall Avenue to Alpha's instead of having a lot of weird curve and bending to get there.
Yeah, which kind of defeats the purpose of having the access.
Right, right. Well, and we wouldn't ever, you know, this, I believe, per conversations with the applicant, would still allow him to build the building he intends to build. That's important, obviously. So certainly worthy of your discussion, and of course, the draft condition.
Is this an access that the city can take on?
What's that?
Is this an access that the city can take on itself, as far as like?
How the condition?
How it's do, if we, if we're granted that?
Yes.
The time?
How it would basically go, if this, if the council approves and the draft condition is included, distributed by the chair, the city manager would then take the project to city council, one, to gauge their interest in the project, and two, obviously to discuss funding and project planning. If council was not interested in the connection, didn't have the funds, didn't want to appropriate the funds, he would not have to convey any property to the city. It's all content, his conveying is contingent on the city, more or less constructing the road for access to his parcel, the adjacent parcels, and a future connection to Alpha Street.
And he's given us already, he would be required 20 and 20, so just all together, sandwiched together, it's the 40.
Right.
For better access.
Right.
Which is consistent with what the comprehensive plan states.
Man, Chair, if I may, since we are still in work session, we've got about 12 minutes. If you don't have time for the second item, I do think I could discuss the third item in the time remaining. You want me to?
Okay.
If not, we can hold it to the regular session.
[laughing]
But it's totally up to you.
Does anybody have any more questions on this? Okay. Thomas, proceed.
Thank you. We will still cover the open space discussion in the, in the regular session, but this, at least at its face, should be a shorter presentation, I'll say. For years, we have been working, we staff, you, the planning commission, city council have been working on language to regulate short-term rentals in the city. Airbnbs and verbos, they exist, they have existed for years. We waited for years on the General Assembly to give us some state code to guide us. Needless to say, we didn't get very much help from the General Assembly for two years. So then it was time. We had just enough from some state code regarding registration and some regulation. It was time to develop our own code. Planning commission had a series of conversations last year, and some, I believe, the year prior. Uh... prior, and then there was a resolution recommended to council back in October, I believe. They considered it, and Councilwoman Bunting asked that it be postponed and that they have a work session to discuss it further. They discussed further, and the majority of council, all seven of them, voted to remand this back to planning commission with the language inserted that was offered by Councilwoman Bunting in work session. The language, the amended language is in green. This is the amended language her and the city manager worked on, and in short, it would make the process much more restrictive than originally proposed to them and recommended for approval by the planning commission. Prior to this amendment, the language that went to them would have permitted whole house or whole space rentals, basically, in any district in the city by conditional use permit. So that was regardless of whether it was a residentially zoned property or commercially zoned property, anybody could request a whole home, short-term rental by conditional use permit. The language as it existed, someone could also request a short-term rental or a business permit for short-term rental if the space was occupied by the owner or an operator. So this is a partial home rental. This is the person that offers for rent less than 30 days a bedroom or two bedrooms or a part of their home. But they, the owner, or an operator, so that could have been someone you rent to who operates an Airbnb for you, that would have been permitted administratively, same way we basically permit any home business in the city. That was what went to city council. What's been remanded back to you is more restrictive in that it would only allow conditional use permit applications for a whole home rental in commercial districts, not in residential districts at all. So only in commercial districts, those listed, could you request a conditional use permit for a whole home, short-term rental. There are a few homes, the one near 711 on With Creek Road that does have a conditional use permit is one of them, that lie in a commercial district. This wouldn't, this would allow someone to lease a space in one of the shopping centers and convert it and use for the purpose of a short-term rental. It would not, however, permit anyone on a residentially zoned piece of property to apply for CUP for a whole home rental. So much stricter in scope of what properties are eligible to even apply for CUP. That's how the new language reads. It also changes for partial home rentals that it must be owner occupied, not operator. So you, the owner, would have to apply for the permit, and you, the owner, would have to be onsite to rent a portion of your home to someone else for the purpose of short-term rental. That would not allow you, the owner, to rent your home to somebody, and then the renter act in the capacity of, as an operator, and offer your home for short-term rental. You have to live at your home, you have to apply for the permit, and you have to be the one that owns and operates the partial home, short-term rental. You have a, and we define, added a definition of owner to clarify that. So you have in front of you tonight an approval resolution that reflects these changes as recommended and remanded to you by city council. If you, a majority of you, desire to approve the changes as written, then that would be the motion to approve the resolution as it's been remanded to you for, recommended for approval back to city council. If not, if there's no majority of you that wants to recommend the language as presented to you for approval, then you would more or less just stay with what you recommended back in October, the more permissive version of this. That would allow folks to apply for a conditional use permit regardless of zoning district for whole home rentals, and would permit folks in the capacity as operator to apply for partial home, short-term rental, again, regardless of zoning district. We do have a few minutes. If you have any questions, that's it in a five-minute nutshell, and again, I'll go through this again in regular session.
I actually attended that city council meeting during the work session and heard the back and forth about that, so it was a good discussion, and, you know, certainly we took a bite at the apple, and now they've remanded it back, and so therefore, you know, what we have to decide tonight is if we're comfortable with it. One of the council members came up to me and asked me what I thought of it, and I said it was certainly fine to me, but ultimately, it's the commission on it, so anyways.
Turn a summary of what the primary concerns were from that session?
So to paraphrase, essentially, what has happened in some communities is people buy these houses, they rent them out, and there's no owner occupied oversight of them. So the concern that Honorable Debbie Bunting stated was she had heard from her constituents voicing those concerns, and as Thomas stated, you know, they had worked with the city manager's office and, you know, come up with this verbiage, this language, amend it, and wanted us to consider that, you know, this evening. So that, it was very brief.
I'm actually okay with that part. It was the part about no permit, nothing permitted within residential areas. That seems, if it's going to have to be conditional, it's going to have to be applied and permitted anyway, what's the reason for completely excluding it entirely? That's the part I wasn't sure about.
I can add to that real quick. Basically, we're saying the way it's written that we're not going to have Airbnb and VRBO.
It would restrict someone's ability to apply for a CUP for a whole home rental to own properties that are zoned commercially. It takes away the ability for someone to apply for a CUP for a whole home rental in any residentially zoned piece of property. So it is much more restrictive in scope. That was the intention from Councilwoman Bunting, and council paraphrasing and taking from her comments was because she heard concerns voiced by citizens that, you know, short-term rentals was not necessarily something they wanted on their, their street, in their residentially zoned neighborhoods, and that's why it's back to you in the form it's in. We do have just a few minutes, Madam Chair. We can pause for just a few minutes and then jump into regular session.
Let's do that. Let's pause and adjourn the work session and then reconvene at 7:00 for the regular meeting.